So we'll go ahead and work our way through that, counsel. Is there anything on consent agenda? Item one?
Well, I've got about three that I want to pull. Okay.
It's high up, but y'all just relax.
I was just gonna say, Brandon just won the over-under. Item two? Item three? Item four?
Mayor, council will say that item three and four are similar, that these are really construction management boots-on-the-ground services from above Kinley and from, and follow later with Kinley or in this result of two or three major positions in parks or recreation that are unbuilt at the moment. So we need some help with these, both similar because of top vacancies that are recent in Stacy's department.
Stacy, you're running them all.
No, ma'am.
And the good thing about these are is if we don't use their services, we don't pay them. Once we fill it, we can afford it.
Okay. Item five? Item six? Item seven?
On the back phone device, I guess, once you take them off and use them somewhere else, they're just kind of gone.
Possibly could, it's a good question. Again, we could get them certified and maybe have some use in the city or other. This is a great initiative. We will, I suspect, I expect that we'll get at least a six or eight pound static availability in essence, more pressure in the northeast quadrant of Castle Hills. These are put on behind the master meters that are metered in. I want to give it to run out of the best way so that it's no longer needed. And that really gives you one-way flow. By taking the DCVAs off behind the meters, you'll have two-way flow. We expect our residents up in that area to receive probably experience a six- or eight-pound increase in pressure. We've had a number of complaints through the several years of as that's developed, that low pressure out there, and this will help that immensely when that happens. So pulling these meters, these DCVAs, is a good thing. Take about six months to finish, but it'll be a good move.
And that would be an easy thing to just forget about or get lost in the cracks. So I appreciate y'all.
We'll come back with the meters later. But to your point, counsel, we'll try to make good use. These are large DCVAs, so perhaps we could use them in the city or find some use for them if they're still certifiable. Yes, sir.
Item eight? Regular hearing, item nine?
Oh, I hated to hear that about Stacy. I didn't realize he was going through all that stuff.
I'll be here at night.
Yeah, but we're not allowed to know. Item ten? Item eleven?
So mayor and council, this item, this is North Mill Street, specifically in the area that Northview Baptist Church provided the 90-degree parking. Several years ago, we will be putting out flyers to the apartment complex. Our goal is to enforce by a warning first and notifications, and so hopefully we can reduce a lot of the long-term. It is public parking. Anyone can park there, but there's long-term parking that's going on, really overflowed mainly from the apartment complex on either side. So we've been in contact with the manager, and we'll be reaching out to them as well. Tell them we'll do warnings and notices on the vehicles that are there, especially the ones that are there in some cases for several days. So Reverend Wells is aware that this is on the agenda tonight?
He's out of town.
He is. But I think Rob and the rest of the staff out there are happy this is on the agenda for tonight. Maybe that'll help their situation.
This started being a major problem when they redid their policies and their lease, that they had to buy a parking permit. So most of the cars that are parking out there, their overflow extra don't even belong to the person on the lease. So they're not getting permits for all of them. They're just parking them out there.
So is this going to create a parking issue with that apartment complex? Do they not have enough parking? Or is it just?
Well, the thing about it is, is you, I go to church there. They, they just instituted that policy where if they will tell you if you don't, have they talked to you too?
No, we haven't worked with them.
Okay. They'll tell you if you don't have a parking permit within their, their property. And so many of them are cars of guests that aren't necessarily on the lease, and they're not buying parking permits because it's cheaper to park out there.
Lake Park.
But this is just they can't park overnight essentially?
This is from 10:00 PM, I believe, to 7:00 AM, and it's overnight for anyone to park there from that period. So it is public parking, and I, Councilwoman Kay is correct, that this is an old complex that's been there a long time, but they were now requiring their tenants to register their vehicles. If you have covered parking, I think that's a different rate. But if you have a guest or people are just living in that apartment unit, as friends are extra, 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 then they have to get a parking permit too. And I believe that's what's caused the issue. They're enforcing it on their campus. So those that aren't paying for that visitor parking or the additional parking, they're parking out on Mill, also at the church, and they were parking, I believe, over in the park, but that's gated off there where the Turing Wall was, or the Vietnam Wall. That little parking lot has a pipe gate, I believe. Is that right, Stacy? And it's gated a lot. So we'll go into this easy with enforcement, but this should open up Mill Street to true public parking and not have long-term parking that's going on there.
Okay.
Some of those cars aren't moving for 48 hours or better.
Well, some of them hadn't moved in months. They just, as recently, they park them out there.
So we'll sign it, and the effective date, I assume, is going to be 10. Place dates after Friday or whatever the published date is, and we'll ease that to.
Anything else on item 11? I've been told that we don't have anything for closed session. Is that still the case?
That is correct, sir.
So we will not have a closed session?
No close tonight, council.
With that, we will go ahead and move into item B, which is Discussion of Fiscal Year 2223 Recommendation for Compensation Adjustments. We have our Assistant City Manager, Shante Akapia, to present a PowerPoint presentation for our consideration.
Mayor, council, thank you for having me today. Normally, our HR director would make this presentation to you all, but we have a vacancy in that position, therefore you are stuck with me. So we'll go ahead and get this presentation started. So today's presentation closely aligns with one of the top nine priorities that council set in March of this year. Prior to getting into our normal presentation, we thought we would pause and take you on a journey to tell you why this priority is so impactful and timely as it relates to today's workforce. So we've all heard of the term "the great resignation" by now, which occurred as a result of the pandemic. And according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, 4.3 million people voluntarily left their jobs in December of last year. 4.3 million. And so research shows that prior to the pandemic, employees left one employer for another employer. Post-pandemic, people have left their jobs to try out other professions, such as those that are in the gig economy, or they have just decided to live until they're forced to return back to the workplace. So from an employer perspective, this has really made it very challenging for us to actually attract employees and retain employees. So we are truly in a competition for talent right now. As depicted on this survey data, HR leaders say that the most pressing hurdle that their organization is facing is in the space of hiring and retention. In looking at the city of Lewisville's workforce stats, we feel that this hurdle is true for us as well. So on the screen, you'll see data as of June 2021. At that time, we had 64 vacancies and our turnover rate was only 8%. However, in June of 2022, our vacancies increased to 113 and our turnover rate increased to 12. Now, the increase in the vacancies speak to our inability to attract talent, and the increase in our turnover number speaks to our inability to retain talent. When those two figures are brought together, it is disastrous for us as an employer because it definitely impacts our ability to recruit and to retain, which again speaks to the importance of you all making one of your goals and your top priorities this year, the attraction, development, and retention of employees. So to that end, earlier this month, or actually it was last month, council approved an appropriation for us to hire a comp study consultant within this fiscal year. Now, the comp study will take about eight months to complete. Realizing that that's not necessarily meeting our employees' needs currently, we are recommending breaking our focus down into two phases. The first phase is our annual compensation adjustments, and our second phase is the actual implementation of said compensation and classification study. So on the screen, you'll find our directives that speak to our market analysis process, which is geared towards attracting and retaining talent. Also included on this slide is the internal equity process that the HR team goes through to make sure that internally our employees have equity and parity. Now, per our directive, we have 16 cities that we use as our market comparators. In this presentation, you may hear me refer to them as our market instead of market comparators. Now, in a traditional sense, your market is who you gain employees from and lose employees to, in a traditional sense. From a compensation perspective, we evaluate the pay plans from our market against our pay plans to determine whether or not we are competitive. So that's why these cities are important. Now, our compensation philosophy is what we use to determine our competitiveness within the market. So for our general employee population, we look at the average of market midpoints. For police and fire, we look at the max step plus 3%. We add the 3% in an effort to lead the market. We will talk about lead and lag a little bit later in the presentation. As it relates to the assistant chiefs, actual salaries are used when we evaluate their pay plans. We have six separate pay plans, which are developed by using our compensation philosophy against the pay plan information that we actually receive from the market comparators. We have 214 different positions within the city of Lewisville, and unfortunately, it's not feasible for the human resources staff to survey all 16 of our market comparators for 214 different positions. Therefore, in the compensation industry, it is commonplace to use a concept called a benchmark. And a benchmark essentially is a position that is easily found in other market comparators. A buyer example, planners are found in other cities, a construction inspector. So on the screen, you'll see a list of different benchmark positions that we use in an effort to determine how much our pay plan should be adjusted. Now, for the general employee population, we compare the average of the market midpoints to our current midpoints to determine if we are competitive in the marketplace. If the plan needs to be adjusted, we make that change October 1st of each year. Under our current process, only the employees who fall below the new minimum are adjusted to that new minimum. Now, this process results in compression. We'll talk about compression a little bit later in the process. But to give you an example of how the pay plan is administered as it relates to being behind the market, on the screen, you'll find an example. In this example, we have John Snow. Somebody caught that. That's awesome. And John Snow is a newly hired maintenance worker within the city of Lewisville. His current salary is $15.82. Based on our survey data, our pay plan was behind market by 2%. So the pay range for John's position was increased by 2%. So you'll see that the minimum midpoint and maximum were increased by 2%. Being that John's current salary was below the new minimum, he will be placed in the new minimum of $1613 on October 1st. Now, broadband is a pay plan that is specifically for our managers and our directors. Now, for this pay plan, we use our actual salary. So everyone that's on that pay plan are compared to the actual salaries of those that are in our market comparators. And employees on this pay plan are evaluated and adjusted anywhere between every three to five years. Now, this slide combines what we have discussed thus far. The top charts include the benchmarks for each pay plan. The purple boxes depict the delta between the midpoints of our benchmarks to that of the market. So for our professional and administrative pay plans, we are about 1% under-market, while our trades plan is about 2% under-market.
Better hurry.
I know, right? I was just thinking that we're getting attacked or something. Okay. So as previously mentioned, police and fire step plans are evaluated based on the maximum step for each rank. We usually begin collecting data around May or so of every year, and the data that is provided by our benchmark or our comparators is based off of their current pay structure. Now, realizing that every city makes a change to their pay plan in October of every year, back in 2016, the city decided to add 2% for police and fire for the compensation philosophy, and then 1819, it was increasing to 3%. So currently, their pay philosophy or compensation philosophy is the max step, well, they changed it from the max step, average max step, to average max step plus 3%. Now, the importance of that will be discussed a little bit later. Here, you'll find the results of our 2022 market survey for our sworn police officer positions or police positions. The variance shows the difference between our current max step against the average market's max step, and then the next column shows the difference when we add the 3% based off of their new compensation philosophy. Now, this slide provides an example of the importance for the new police and fire compensation philosophy of average market max plus 3%. At the bottom of the chart, you'll find our current police officer max salary is almost 1% above the average of our market's max. However, when we adjust our pay plan in October, other cities are going to adjust their pay plans as well, which will result in a situation where we're going to lag the market. And so we anticipate what the market increase will be, and as you guys mentioned, in 2018 or so, '19, we increased that to 3%. So as an example, if you look at the city of Plano, currently their max step is at $99,000. If they adjust their pay plan by 3%, which is likely, in October of this year, their new max step will be almost $102,000. So if we did not use our max average plus 3%, we would have remained at our current max of $91,000. So we would have just fell further behind the market. Now, this is the data for fire, for certified fire physicians. Again, the variance shows the difference between our current max step against the average of the market's max step, and then the next column shows the difference when we apply our compensation philosophy of average market max plus 3%. This slide has the same concept as it relates to our fire physicians. At the bottom of the chart, you'll find the current firefighter's max salary is less than 1% above our average, the average of our markets, market's max. So using our previous example, Plano's max step is $89,930. And if they adjust their pay plans by 3%, in October, their new max would be 92, almost $93,000, where if we continue to lag the market, our max step will remain at $86,000. And unfortunately, that would really impact our ability to recruit and retain employees. So kudos to the city for making that decision years ago to actually combat the lag effect. Now, the other compensation adjustment process that we use here is performance-based. This type of increase is provided to employees who receive at least some elite standards on their performance evaluation, and they are not currently involved in disciplinary action. Now, the next two slides will review the FY 2023 budget recommendations. For Phase One, general employees, we are recommending that we do a market adjustment to all pay plans of 2%. We are also recommending that we do something a little different this year as it relates to compression. You guys will remember John Snow. He's that newly hired maintenance worker. Well, then, we currently have an employee, her name is Ariya Stark, and she too is a maintenance worker, and she's been with the city of Lewisville for two years. Her current salary is $1620, which is higher than the new minimum. And so based off of past practice, her salary would not have been adjusted. So she would have been very close to John, who was a newly hired employee. So our recommended, recommendation is that Ariya's, Ariya's new salary is increased by the 2% in an effort to maintain that spread between our tenured employees and our new employees. And that is a new process, but we are definitely recommending it from a retention perspective.
Have I seen her? I can't recognize her face.
You don't remember her?
I don't remember her face at all.
Yeah. What about John? Do you remember him?
Yeah, he works on the wall.
Exactly where he works. Okay. So also included in Phase One is a 4% merit increase for our employees, and we are recommending 4% in an effort to reach parity with police and fire. Now, for police and fire employees, we are recommending to adjust their pay plans on average by 1.9% for police officers, sergeant, and captain, an average of 3.25% for firefighter driver, engineer, captain, the tier onion chief, and division chief. Now, all employees will be responsible or eligible for a 4% step increase if they are not under a disciplinary action. Now, Phase Two is the actual implementation of the compensation and classification study. Now, we have funded the consultant, so within the next council meetings, you guys will have an opportunity to approve, hopefully approve, said contract. Our consultant will be responsible for conducting a comprehensive review of our current pay plans and pay practices to make sure that we are competitive in the marketplace. We have also charged the consultant with looking at methods for career advancement as with recognizing employees for their tenure within the organization. Now, this slide gives you a holistic, big-picture review of the different phases. One thing that was very important for us is that the process is an inclusive process. So we're going to have various focus groups with employees throughout the organization as with leaders to see what pain points currently exist within our compensation structure and pay and plan. As it relates to the pay structure development, I mentioned earlier, we currently have six pay plans. Because we currently have six, doesn't mean that we have to continue to have six. So with that, they may evaluate having specialized pay plans and things of that nature. So that's a part of that process. And then the job salary grade assignment, I'm not going to get too far into the weeds on that, but that's them doing their market review against our compensation philosophy and this internal alignment process. It's just a glorious process that the directors are going to really enjoy. I mean, facetious, but that is a process by which they can determine the fact, the market says this position is valued here. Where do we feel that the position is valued? And how does a building inspector relate to a fire inspector and things of that nature? So that's that internal alignment component. They're going to love it. And then the next phase is the review of the pay practices. We have received some requests from employees for different types of certification pay and things of that nature. So they're going to review that for best practices. This next one, I'm very excited about. It kind of goes back to that inclusive process we talked about earlier. Each employee will have the opportunity to fill out what's called a position analysis questionnaire, PAQ. And in that PAQ, they are going to be able to tell the consultants everything that they do in their job, what level of experience is needed, what education is needed, what certifications are needed, and it goes up through their leadership pipeline to sign off on. That document will be used for two things. It'll be used in that job salary grade assignment category, and it'll also be used to develop new job descriptions and new titling. We have an opportunity to look at our titles, which some of them are kind of dated, like clerk, and reevaluate best practices for those titles. And then lastly, they will help us with developing a long-term compensation plan for administering our pay philosophy and how often we should go to market and things of that nature. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Counsel, we've got about five minutes, so.
Is there anything to look at as far as more than just pay? Because I know myself, it's not just more about just the pay. It's the flexible work schedule, it's maybe more vacation time, any of that being looked at, because distinctly that's, from what's gone on the last couple of years, it seems like that's what people are looking for.
Agreed.
It's like the retiree insurance we were discussing, lane five and 30.
We could expand the study to evaluate those things. I do know that we are looking at flexible work schedules. The departments do have, our department heads have the ability to allow telecommuting on an as-needed basis and be more flexible in their work environment, but we are exploring those things. Any other questions?
Appreciate the follow-up and the details.
Okay, thank you.
And the, my fantasy?
Yes.
Surely we can't hire any more staff.
Yeah, if you can work some Tolkien into the next one.
I will, I'll do that.
Do you have a very long path?
I'm just curious what Stacy's title is going to be. Moving on. All right, we're going to move out to regular session at 7:00 PM.
It is 7 o'clock, Monday, July 11th. Like to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order, and we do have a quorum. First up, we have Councilmember Green with our invocation.
Ms. Dan? Please join me in a moment of quiet contemplation. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge to American and Texas Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, I've got a proclamation. Mr. Pope, would you mind joining me here at the dais, please? All right, I've got Mr. Pope. All right, uh, I've got Mr. Pope here to say a few words, but tonight, we are going to be recogni- recognizing, um, our Parks and Recreation Team members and declaring the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to, on behalf of, um, the Board of, um, Parks and Recreation Board, I would like to thank the, um, Parks and Recreation Department for the fine work that they're doing. They work for us every day of the year, not only on the weekends, like this weekend for the duck derby, but they take care of us every day by cutting the grass and trimming the bushes. They are true civil servants, and, um, they are to be commended, and I wanna thank them, along with her fine staff and all the personnel at, um, the Parks Department for the fine work that they do. They do a tireless job to make sure that the residents of Lewisville have a better place to live and a healthier place to live. And, um, along with the city, city of Lewisville and this fine city council, again, I would like to thank you for the support that you give us, plus all of those countless volunteers and concerned citizens who make Lewisville's Parks and Recreation Department the best possible. So together, we can rise and thrive and, and have a better city of Lewisville. Thank you.
So I have a quick proclamation to read, and I'm not gonna go through all eleven of the whereas's, um, but we'll go through a few of them. And if you don't mind, if you feel like there's a whereas that you feel called to participate in, we can have a little call and response. I don't have a problem with that at all. Um, but I do also want to thank, um, everyone who is part of our parks, whether it's the people that use it, the people that maintain it, uh, the people that direct it. Uh, I've said for many years that if you cut a municipality to the bone, then all you have is nine pit stops on I-35. Our parks are a big reason why people call Lewisville home, and I'm, I'm glad that we continue to invest there. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the citizens, the city of Lewisville, and... There we go, that's it. Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and... Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and... Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and... The U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and... The city of Lewisville recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources and strives to provide access to a quality park, trail, an open space within ten-minute walk from all residents by 2035. Now therefore be it resolved by Lewisville City Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month and the city of Lewisville adopted this eleventh day of July 2022. Thank you all so much. You're welcome. Any other words? Guys, pictures, great work, just appreciate you. Oh, more pictures? Come on, come on. Yeah, I know how it goes. Put the pretty people up front here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all. All right, next up, we have certificates of appointment and oaths of offices to reappointed and newly appointed members of the city's boards, commissions, and committees. So we're gonna do this, um, and Julie will correct me if I'm incorrect, um, we're gonna do this as a group, so I'm gonna call several names up here, and then y'all will get to swearing. How's that sound? All right. Michael Gorts for Arts Advisory Board, place number eight. Lori Wilson, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, place four. Anna Saju, Library Board, place number four. Jennifer Lindy, Arts Advisory Board, place number six. Chris Crawford, Park Board, place number four. Denise Crafton, Animal Services Advisory Board, place number two. Elizabeth Flores, Park Board, place number two. Kay Stevenson, Library Board, place number two. Blake Wine, Park Board, place number six. Blake, did I get that right? Thank you. I'm always, I'm always putting the emphasis on the wrong syllable. Kristen Green, TERS number three, place number three. Kristen Green, TERS number four, place number six. Brandon Jones, TERS number four, place number five. William Meredith, TERS number three, place number five. Bob Troyer, TERS number three, place number one. And Bob Troyer, TERS, place number two, TERS two, place number two. And Mr. Timothy Fields, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, place number six. For those of you with the TERS, those tend to stay on council just because they're the, the assessment of tax dollars and where they go, so we tend to keep those on that. So we got everybody up here? Before we do any swearing, um, you get your chance, you get your chance, that's, that's all good. Um, folks, without the people standing behind me and the folks that serve on our boards and commissions, those of us who sit here during council meetings could not do our jobs, period, end of story. The amount of work cannot be physically consumed by six council members and a mayor. We need a team of residents that are out there looking, digging in, talking to their neighbors, figuring out what's best for Lewisville. So without these folks, this city would just kinda mumble along, and we wouldn't do what the residents want us to do. Things like 2025 wouldn't happen. Um, so I have the utmost respect for everyone who gives of their time and their treasure and their opinions on these boards and commissions, because without them, the rest of us could not live in a great place where we are. So I appreciate y'all, thank you so much. And with that, get to swearing.
I want you all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
Of state your place...
Of place number six.
That's when we swear.
Of the state your board... Of the city of Lewisville...
Of the city of Lewisville.
State of Texas...
State of Texas.
And will to the best...
And will to the best.
Of my ability...
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances...
And the charter and ordinances.
Of this city...
Of this city.
And I furthermore...
And I furthermore.
Solemnly swear...
Solemnly swear.
That I have not directly...
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid...
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay...
Offered or promised to pay.
Contributed nor promised to contribute...
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing...
Any money or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office...
Or promised any public office.
Or employment...
Or employment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
As a reward to secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I will collect your...
Thank you all. Let's give them a hand. Really excited to be able to do that. It's been a couple of years since we've been able to swear everybody in all at once in one spot, so I appreciate y'all coming out. All right, next up. All right, Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any, uh, citizen comment?
No, sir, I'm not with you, Benny.
All right, thank you. Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any speaker cards or e-commerce?
No, Mayor, not with you, Benny.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Counsel, if you please vote. Consent agenda passes five to nothing. Item G, Regular Hearing. Consideration of an Agreement to Transfer Ownership of a Law Enforcement Animal and Authorization for the City Manager or her Designee to Execute the Agreement. After a recent surgery, it was determined that Lewisville Police Canine, Canine Striker needs to be retired due to his advanced age and restricted functionality. Striker's current handler, Officer Pat Robey, wishes to take custody of Striker when he retires. Striker has served and lived with Officer Robey for almost five years. The Texas Government Code outlines the process for the transfer of a law enforcement animal, including the suitability and eligibility requirements for an animal to be transferred, the requirements for the transferee, and the contract process to complete the transfer. It's recommended that the city council approve the agreement and authorize the city manager or her Designee to execute the agreement as set forth in the caption. Counsel? Counsel, before we, uh, we actually have a presentation to make, uh, we need to go ahead and vote on this, so I need to entertain a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to execute.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Chief, mind meeting me up front here? So what some of you may or may not know is that my uncle, um, worked for Immigration and Customs Enforcement, um, and had a Belgian Malinois, uh, for years. Uh, and so this, this is really special to me because what these officers do to take these animals, they're not animals anymore, they're officers, um, to take them home and be part of their family, um, and continue to support them, it just, it's an amazing thing. And, and I, I could not be more proud that y'all step up and do that for these guys, because they work hard, they give everything. So with that, I would like to present with the chief here, um, to our Canine Striker for your dedication and service to the Lewisville Police Department, 2015 to 2022. Striker, we thank you for your service. Now go enjoy your retirement, buddy. I think we have some guests to be introduced, so let me, let me step away here.
Here. Well, first off, I couldn't have ever done this position or, or had Striker or Canine without my family, uh, first and foremost. So, uh, my wife here, Krista, and of course, my four kiddos, Bryce and Avalee, Dawson and Hudson, so without them, could I have never done this? And then, secondly, could I have not ever done this without Shane Mens, my mentor? So he took me in under his wing and, and taught me what I know about Canine to this day, and, uh, because of him, I've been able to be successful. Um, other family that I have here is, uh, my dad and, uh, helping put me in a position to, you know, to be as successful in life, and, um, my uncle Danny, my Aunt Tamara, my cousin Brayden are here, a couple of friends, uh, that I have here, Stacy and Tori, and of course, all the other Canine units that we used to train with, uh, Jeff Padir, uh, and Canine Koopa, uh, from Parrish PD. Koopa is also retired. And then we have Jody and Bosch from the Texas Game Wardens, and they're still active in service. And of course, uh, Canine Seiko, who retired with, uh, Officer Mens from Lewisville PD. So thank you all for being here, it means a lot that you're here. Uh, can't forget my, uh, brother and sister-in-law, Josh, Chelsea, cousin, nephew Carter. So thank you all for being here as well, and, uh, it means a lot that you're here.
I, I will say that the police department has, uh, done a wonderful job of keeping me out of the bite suit, because I totally would wear one. I think that's, would be one of the most awesome things, because if you've ever seen one of these guys do their work, it is an amazing thing. And I think we'll, we'll have some officers out when we do the open house for the police department next, next time, so you can actually watch, watch these animals work, they are amazing. So thank you, guys, appreciate you. Counsel, um, do any of our council folks wanna have a word or two? What'd you like? What? Did you miss?
My word was, we wanted to pet him.
Oh, you wanted to pet him? Oh, okay. Well, that I don't know.
I don't think, I don't know about that.
He's retired, he's friendly.
I'm sure he's friendly.
They get a little snaky. They, they call them malagators for a reason.
And they get the last word.
Yeah, they do.
It is. You know, I appreciate counsel for voting on this. Uh, it's, it's interesting, because the state of Texas actually treats them as property. And so typically, when a city has to divest of property, it has to go to auction. And so that's why we have to do that, that process that we did, so to go ahead and release the, uh, the officer to his, uh, forever home. Item 10, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Sections 15 dash 126, Establishing a Parking Prohibition on a Segment of Lake Falls Terrace and Providing for Repealer, Severability, Penalty, and an Effective Date, and Declaring an Emergency. Lake Falls Terrace is an entry street shared between Memorial Elementary School and Lakewood Hills subdivision. Memorial Elementary, parents regularly park on the short segment of Lake Falls Terrace immediately west of Josie Lane while dropping off and picking up students, creating congestion within the entrance to the neighborhood. Staff has received multiple complaints from Lakewood Hills residents and LISD staff about the congestion during school drop-off and pickup times. The proposed ordinance will prohibit parking on the north and west sides of Lake Falls Terrace from Josie Lane to Lakewood Bluff Trail, and along the south side of Lake Falls Terrace from Josie Lane to a point 175 feet to the west. This item was presented to the Transportation Board on May 3rd, 2022, and the Board recommended approval of the proposed ordinance change with a vote of seven to nothing. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
I have a motion in the second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15 dash 126, by prohibiting parking on a certain segment of Lake Falls Terrace, providing for repealer, severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item 11, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Sections 15-127, by prohibiting parking on North Mill Street from 200 feet north of the center line of Hedgeroe Lane to 300 feet south of the center line of Hedgeroe Lane between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, providing for a repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. In 2013, Northview Baptist Church entered an agreement with the city of Lewisville to build at their own cost public head-in parking along both sides of North Mill Street for roughly 200 feet north of and 300 feet south of Hedgeroe Lane. Within the last year, the Park Lake Apartment Community has instituted onsite parking restrictions to help curb unauthorized vehicles parking on premise. Since that time, both engineering staff and the police department have received complaints regarding nuisances related to the public head-in parking spaces and are proposing time restrictions to help alleviate those nuisances. The Transportation Board recommended the ordinance with a vote of four to nothing. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, is available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move to approve.
I have a motion in a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 15, Section 15-127, by prohibiting parking on Mill Street from 200 feet north of the center line on Hedgeroe Lane to 300 feet south of the center line of Hedgeroe Lane between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, providing for repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. All right. With that, we have no workshop to break into, or not workshop, we have no closed session. So we will move to announcements. And of course, these are general announcements of public interest, and we can start with Councilmember Green.
Well, I'm going to make it quick because I got a mosquito after me up here. So I just wanted to mention that we do have a community needs assessment survey going on. It is an online survey that we are highly encouraging citizens to just take a few minutes to take the survey. I've done the survey. I think it's very important, you know, when we did 2025, we identified a lot of things that the citizens of the city wanted that we, as a city, would never have known of otherwise. So this helps inform decisions about housing and businesses and all sorts of things that the city does. It's very, very important that this is the place to put the comments, not on Facebook, about what you want your community to have and not have and how you want it to be better. This is where you put that information so that we can use it for the betterment of the community. So that's all I have. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. You can find the survey on the city's website under Neighborhood Services. Sorry, now I'm done.
All right. This one is not so much a fun one, but one that, you know, we always look forward to our lake level report, but we are experiencing some drought conditions. So we've enacted as of May 1, some water restrictions. You can find that on the Lewisville staff page and give you the specifics on that. But in a nutshell, we need to conserve water. We need to make sure we're not watering in the daytime because we're just letting the sun burn that up. We have to conserve and before we go into the next stage. So we don't want to let that continue. Again, go to the Lewisville staff page, you can get the specifics on the times and the address numbers, I think they go odd and even, you can get all the specifics on that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have much, just to say that as times get tougher, more animals are getting surrendered. So there's that constant wave of fees, especially the large dogs. It's mainly the large dogs that are getting surrendered. So contact Animal Services and bring home our forever baby.
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. America's News Digital Newspaper Collection, something new with the library. Make Your Own Oat Milk, open to adult age 18 and older, Tuesday, July 12, 6:30 to 7:30. Registration is required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Morning Book Buzz, active adult book club for senior adults, Wednesday, July 13, 10 to 11:00 AM, no registration at the Crawford Meeting Room. Teens versus Adults Trivia, I might actually get involved with this myself. Thursday, July 14, 6:30 to 7:30 at the Bennett Program Room, registration is required. Storytime at Dragon Park for families with children of all ages, Friday, July 15, 9 to 9:30, no registration at Dragon Park, 2719 Moon Drive. That's all I've got. Thank you, sir. Mr. Dory?
Okay. First of all, I want to compliment everyone who is on the city staff, who is involved in making the July 4th on the 5th a success. I heard lots of compliments on our fireworks and the music that went on that day. So kudos to everybody that was involved. I do have several things to announce for the Lewisville Grand Theater. Performances going on, The Old Crowd, a musical inspired by the music of Leslie Gore. It's presented by Breckenridge Script Right, and that's July 20 to the 23rd. Comestory Reset Concert is presented by the city of Lewisville on July 23rd. And then we have three more Sounds of Lewisville going on this month. First of all, on the 12th is Back in Black, music of AC/DC. On the 19th is Havana NRG. And on the 26th will be Limelight. And of course, those are all presented by the city of Lewisville. Also, on the 16th of July, we have Rock Show presented by Ampersand Music. And then, as always, on Friday nights, we have the Acoustic Jam going on, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. There are activities going on every week. We have Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue Andrew Studios on Wednesdays. Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City on Thursdays. And Tai Chi in the Plaza, presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And there are currently, we have two exhibitions going on, art exhibitions going on in the grand. First of all, Life is a Theater, presented by Society of Depressed Artists, My Polar Life and Jose Angel Hernandez, July 15 through August 13. And then Fresh Ideas, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, going from July 16 to August 13. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretaries? I want to thank our PD for being here. They always do such a great job. We got anything in planning?
No report, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
No report.
No report.
Mayor and counsel, as part of our ongoing celebration of July as Parks and Rec Month, you will find at your station a rubber ducky that shall be decorated and turned into our office on Friday because the first race of the Ducky Derby will be city council members. There will be no substituting the said duck for your personal ducks, your ducks are numbered and so that we make sure that there's no wind aiding in the race. But the event starts at 10 o'clock and runs through 12:30. It'll be held at Sun Valley Aquatic Center. And all the participants who have already decorated their ducks will be enjoying a nice meal from In-N-Out Burger. So if y'all could join us, I'd appreciate that.
That's great, thank you so much. Lake Level?
Mayor, I have a lake level report and just an overall water system report. So the lake level currently is at 521.51 feet, and that's roughly about 97.5% full. So we don't necessarily have a source issue right now. We are seeing increased demands in the water system. We are not alone in that. Opportunity is also seeing those as well. So Sunday, Sunday evening into Monday, we actually saw our highest day of pumping throughout our water plant, through our water system. And these consecutive 100-degree days are kind of taking a toll on the system a little bit, specifically in one area, in the Castle Hills area, at our Castle Hills Pump Station, that recently annexed area. So as of 1:00 PM today, we did take a subscription increase from Opportunity Regional Water District. So we increased it by another 1 million gallons per day. And just wanted to use this opportunity to dovetail off Mayor Pro Tim Jones's report and talk about our water restrictions. They are seasonal, so May 1 through September 30. It is an even-odd setup, so based upon your address number, even numbers are Tuesday through Saturday. Are those, I'm sorry, Tuesday and Saturday are those watering days. Odd-number addresses ending in an odd number are Wednesday and Sunday. And then finally, commercial and multifamily customers are Monday and Thursday. And Fridays should be a day of recovery. So yeah, the water plant is doing good, our water system is good right now. We've actually lowered the flow. We were maxed out on Sunday. They have come back down to about 17 million gallons per day in production, but I expect that to go back up here in the next couple hours. So we're doing okay.
And a couple of things to be clear on, you may see places like Railroad Park actually sprinkling at times that were not listed. And that's because Railroad Park actually uses the detention ponds and the gray water that is there to water itself. You may see that on other commercial buildings or in residents that have wells. We do still have a few of those. With that being said, we just pulled the trigger on another million gallons per day. That does not go away. Once you pull that trigger as a municipality, you are now encumbered with that million dollars, or I'm sorry, million gallons, it's more than a million dollars, but with that encumbrance, moving forward. So that gets reflected in our water bills moving forward. Just to let everybody out there who is dealing with water right now, we understand, but we really need to encourage everyone, you know, utilize less water. Look at some alternatives. I'm excited this fall, I think we're going to see some alternatives from our city staff for more native landscaping and plant opportunities for our residents who maybe want to get away from a green grass lawn and move to more green, hardy plantings that actually can survive this stuff without water or with very little. So thank you for the update. I think it's really important people understand how water works. Once you pay for, once you buy it, once you're committed, you're in with the water district forever. When we buy it from Dallas, we're in forever. That's just how the water system works in the state of Texas. So thank you, guys, I appreciate that. I know it's hard getting that much flow out of the system. So anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No report, sir.
No report. Ms. Ferris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the workforce and our employees and all departments that are out there in this heat, and they're bringing good customer service and doing what they do. So thank you all, workforce out there and all departments, doing a great job. And we have a ways to go before it cools off, but just want to tell all the employees that are out there, doing a great job.
Really appreciate everybody out there. I did want to make a couple of comments that I'd noticed of appreciation out in the world. First of all, residents are, I think, starting to get used to this fireworks on Tuesdays, even if it's not on the 4th of July. In fact, I saw a lot of folks say that they were really appreciative because they had to work on the 4th and it just created another opportunity for them to go and have a family evening out. So I think people are getting used to it and expecting it. So it was a phenomenal show, I really appreciate all the work that goes into making that a success. I also wanted to just give a personal experience. I've been at Thrive a couple of times this past week. My daughter's been dragging me out there for two a days, apparently, I need it. And I wanted to share with you a couple of amazing, well, they were to me, examples of how that facility works. I was sitting waiting for my daughter because she kicks my butt at weightlifting. And I'm sitting over in the quiet wing of Thrive, and I'm watching a senior teaching about four or five little boys, about eight to 11 years old, how to play ping pong. And I'm sitting there for about a half an hour and I'm watching this. And then the next time I'm out, I'm seeing, I call her a nana, she's a little grandmother. She's teaching and I think educating these boys that, because there were about four or five little boys around the pool table, but I think she was, she's teaching them how to, you know, kind of sandbag a little bit and then go. But she's teaching them pool. And I just want to say how proud I am of residents taking that space and using it for what we envisioned, which was a multi-generational space where people can share and participate together. For those of you on the park board, I know it's been challenging in that building. You know, we opened it in the middle of a pandemic, so we closed it again. Staffing challenges all the way around, and I know that can get a little frustrating. But I want to tell you that I had a couple of glorious experiences in the building and it's doing what we hoped it would do. So thank you, guys, for your perseverance. Thank you for creating a space where that can happen. And this too will get better. So I just wanted to add that and let you guys know you're doing good work. With that, we have no further business for this evening, so I call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council adjourned. With that, we have no further business for this evening, so I call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council adjourned.
...